All right, good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board's meeting. Tonight is August 29th. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green, may I prevail upon you to read our announcements?
Certainly. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuann Property Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Daniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, Transfer Station Task Force, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Hanson Day will be held on the Town Hall Green on September 16th, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with a rain date for September 23rd. Local churches, businesses, and civic organizations will be in attendance with free demonstrations, games, crafts, and food. Come see all Hanson has to offer. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, September 5th, 2023; Select Board, September 12th, 2023; Select Board, September 26th, 2023; and then the October Special Town Meeting is October 2, 2023. May I ask a question? Did we set that time at 6:30 now?
Yes.
For the town meeting?
Yes, that was by-
We should probably mention that all the time because-
We should mention it all the time. And we should definitely probably send something to the paper to Ms. Green because that was a successful change suggested by Frank Malisi. And I think we saw the last town meeting. We did get increased attendance. So, yeah, good point, Ann, because I don't know that everybody would think to attend earlier. Okay, that's great. What time have we got, Mr.?
6:05, 6:06.
What can I cover in five minutes? How about one-day liquor licenses? We've got three one-day liquor licenses for 9/9/2023, 9/29/2023, 11/12/2023. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic, you got that down. And Ms. Green, did we have any compelling strategic planning update to discuss this evening?
I don't have any update this evening.
Fantastic, okay. And Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, all right, did we have any update on that?
Yes, we did receive, so we did receive two quotes. One received, we received one from Mark Abrams, who provided the Chapter 70 net spending presentation to us for $15,000. We received a second quote, which was extremely thorough, at a rate of $175,000. So I am requesting that the board allow me to move forward with Mark Abrams, so that he can get this process started.
I will entertain that motion. I will say, I did read the other proposal that came back, and if we were a much larger city, perhaps, we could afford $175,000 truly forensic audit, but that is not the world we're living in right now, so.
Yes.
And I think we're familiar with Mark, and we know what he can do, and he's already, you know, he's already impressed us. So I will entertain a motion to allow Ms. Green to enter into a contract with Mr. Abrams for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District forensic audit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, fantastic. All right, are we at 6:10 yet?
Oh, no.
Oh, God, okay. How about approving open session minutes? I will entertain a motion to approve the August 15th, 2023, open session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
We still got two minutes.
It's the slowest five minutes of the entire world, okay.
There's so much we can get done, we're running out of minds to it.
What's supposed to happen is-
Well, we're going to go into wage and personnel, so.
Um.
All right, let's see, how many, how much time do we have?
Are there any committee updates outside of-
I was going to say, I do have a little quick committee update. Economic Development Committee, as Ms. Rain read, we are having Hanson Day on Hanson Town Hall Green on September 16th, from 11:00 to 2:00, and it's really off the chain, there's no other way to describe it. We've got 10 local businesses, so Hanson VCA, Chimney Chap, Skin Spot, LA Hair Design, and if I don't name somebody, it's just because I'm trying to whip this off in one minute or less. We've got 4H, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Plymouth County Beekeepers, American Legion, Whitman-Hanson Special Education PAC, Hanson PTO, Library, Hanson Fire, Police. Anyway, we've got 55 different vendor, so-called vendors. We also have food trucks this year. Local Larry's Tacos, not to be missed, also Lisa's Treats, and a couple of other things. And then, interestingly, we had Plymouth County Sheriff respond to a request to participate, and they're going to have their Aubrey Farm folks here to talk about what they've got there, which a lot of people aren't aware that there's a farm. Plymouth County Sheriff runs the farm. They're going to have the fingerprinting unit, and they're going to have the K-9 unit. And, most importantly, we will have tick racing by the, you heard it right, Mrs. Rain, tick racing.
Tick racing.
Yes, put on by the Plymouth County entomologist Blake Dinius.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, super interesting.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so, okay, am I at 6:10?
You did it, you brought it to it.
All right, fantastic. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from open session, to go for the purpose of going into wage and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Did you want the gavel?
Yes.
Okay, great.
No, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:10, August 29th, and this is just to provide an announcement that we're continuing this meeting to Thursday, August 31st, at 5:00 p.m., to have a hearing. Is that everything?
In the Select Board meeting room, that's correct.
Okay.
Did you need a motion to open this meeting, the wage and personnel meeting?
Yes.
Did you, did you open it?
No.
Called it to order, but we didn't open up the meeting, so.
So is it a public hearing that you're, so open the public hearing and then continue it to the date and time certain?
Okay, got, okay. I entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, and then we're going to be continuing this until August 31st at 5:00 p.m. Okay, that's what I wanted, okay.
And do we need to make a motion to continue it?
I think we just keep it open, don't we?
You moved to continue it to the date, time, certain, location, certain.
Okay, so a motion to open the hearing and a motion to continue the hearing until August, until August 31st at 5:00 p.m.
So moved.
There we go.
And the Select Board's meeting.
Now we're good. In the Select Board's meeting office, August 31st, Thursday, right here.
5:00.
5:00.
Either of these four.
Now we're good. All right, we got there, we got there. Motion second, all those in favor, just one more for good measure, all of it, okay? And then we're, that's it, right? Perfect.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, so back to our agenda. We're going around the world and back again tonight. So, master plan steering subcommittee volunteer request, Ms. Green.
Yes, so I don't know if the board members are not, but we did receive a grant through the Massachusetts One Stop for Growth Program for basically $60,000 to update our master plan, and we are going to be looking for members to, or volunteers, to sit on the steering subcommittee while Old Colony Planning Council helps us with, through the process of updating the master plan. As far as the number, I, I'm unclear of the number right now, but we just want to get it out there that we are looking for volunteers, and I will have more information on how many volunteers we will need for the subcommittee at our next meeting.
Okay, and were they looking for a member of the Select Board to be a volunteer?
Yes.
They were, okay. Does anybody feel particularly passionate about, or even maybe not passionate, but just inclined, to be a member of the master plan steering subcommittee?
I, I'm not passionate.
I was going to say, except for people that are oversubscribed, like Mr. Heel.
I would do it if there are another, no others that are-
I like your attitude, we appreciate that.
I guess, I guess, I guess. I'll try.
Okay, I like it. All right, okay. All right, so, Mrs. Rain, I'm hearing you say you would like to be, okay, that's wonderful, I appreciate you stepping up.
Maybe.
All right.
Let's see what happens.
So I will entertain a motion to appoint Mrs. Rain as our, as the master plan steering subcommittee point person for the Select Board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, no backing out of it now, Mrs. Rain.
I guess not.
Okay, great. Let's see, what else can we do? We have 6:35, we've got our applicants coming in, so.
We can do the High Street.
Do you think you could pull that off and?
We did, we shot for like 10 minutes.
Really?
Oh, we're trying to keep it-
Well, I didn't know if you had more people coming, so if you feel like you've got critical mass, then I say let's go for it.
If any more people come, we didn't, we didn't post for a quorum.
Okay, okay.
So I don't, yeah, Don Ellis, who's the vice chair, wanted to be here as well, but I don't necessarily think he was mine if.
Okay, then great, I would, we would love to hear from the High Street Park Committee presentation. I think, you know, we get lots of questions, what's going on up at High Street, blah, 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 and we know you guys are meeting fast and furiously, very frequently, and it's just that maybe progress isn't necessarily visible to people, but that doesn't mean there is no progress, so we would love to hear about it. Yeah, yeah, whatever, well, you can sit at the Spanish Inquisition table, or you can bring the, you know.
The podium.
Podium out, it's really up to you, whatever works for you.
This is a new little situation.
Yeah.
All right, I'm Mary Ann Demascio, I'm on the High Street Park Committee, and we were thinking exactly what you were saying, Laura, is that we have been working, but we haven't been back to gear in a long time to show what we've been up to. So we have an update and wanted to share that. It starts with this beautiful picture last spring in the meadow on one of, on the new path, so wanted to start with that to say it's a beautiful spot and a great place to visit, so. Does someone have an answer?
Who is, who's driving?
Just stay next to them.
Okay. Oh, Ryan, you're driving, okay.
Thank you. So we have an agenda here to look at yesterday, today, and tomorrow, just to, for people who are not familiar with this spot, it's the old, there's actually a picture of the plan up there from 1917, or something like that, when the Plymouth County Hospital first started. So we're going to just look, a quick look at the past, a look what's in progress, and what do we see for the future. Next. So, if anyone is not familiar with the hospital, this is what it looked like in 2016. We had some tours inside when we were trying to decide what to do with it, and this, just what we saw caused us to say it's time for it to come down. We did a lot of research about could we keep it, and unfortunately, it was in quite a state of disrepair, disrepair. So this was 2016, we got a town meeting to have it taken down, we actually gave, I think, $200,000 back out of the $1 million that we were granted, and the next slide. This is on the left, the same spot where the building was, it's now a meadow and just some natural plantings are there. On the right is the community garden that has been there for maybe 10, 12 years, but upgraded by an Eagle Scout, that's right behind the food, excuse me, the food pantry. Next. So that goes from yesterday to today, that actually the last slide was today. One thing that we've been able to do is get a perimeter walk in, a trail, it's about eight tenths of a mile. It starts over on Pierce Avenue, where there's a parking lot for 12, a trail lot for about 12 to, 10 to 12 cars. It goes eight tenths of a mile through the park, and it comes out to Meadows, and then there's an exit with a boardwalk and some stairs up to Bonny Hill Lane. And it's part of the Bay Circuit Trail, if anyone has never heard of that, it's a trail that goes from Kingston all the way around Boston up to Newburyport, and Hanson is on part of it, and so this helps to complete a piece of it in the woods. It used to be you would walk up High Street, and now you can walk through the woods to be on the Bay Circuit Trail. We had money from Division of Conservation Services to do that, from Community Preservation Committee and the Conservation Commission, so it's already been about a year that that's been there, we've had a few walks, and we hope to have a grand opening in mid-October. We're still, when we meet next, we'll try to come up with a date, but probably sometime mid-October, so we're trying to get the word out that we have a place to go, people that are, when we see people up there, they're just like, this is great, so nice to have something there. Next. Here's a picture, the first one is over near Pierce Ave in the fall, and then the Bonny Hill entrance is over on the right where the boardwalk is, so it's really a lovely walk through the woods. Next. And then this past weekend, Green Hanson, we just had a cornhole fundraiser for, a cornhole fundraiser, this is right behind the pantry, and you can see on the right hand in the back is the community gardens, and it's a really lovely spot to have events, like some maybe where Hanson Day happens, or some other events, but it's just trying to get people to be there and to see what's, what's there. Next. So a couple of other things about today, what has been going on. We have been working on infrastructure as a first step and engineering plan, and we have initial plans developed for traffic flow and parking. If anyone's been over there by the food pantry, you know, some of the roads or in the parking lot is all dug up, and it's just, we really need to get the infrastructure down, looking at where sidewalks, crosswalks, foot traffic would go, where there would and wouldn't be tree cover and vegetation, we haven't planned out what kind of vegetation, but looking at that, and we're starting to do an initial clearing for where we hope to, a playground will be. And then, under utilities, Don Ellis, who will probably be here shortly, has been working a lot on some of the things like irrigation, septic, there's a well up there, he's been working with fire, water, Board of Health, highway, who are inspecting and have already approved some of the plans for that. So this really is the piece that has taken a while to do, that you can't keep on going and doing things unless you know where the roads are, where the parking is, and so this has slowed us down, but I think we're in a good spot now to move forward where some of these plans are done. Still working on it, though. Next. So tomorrow, what we hope to do-
As if on cue, Mr. Ellis walked through the, through the door.
You had been working a lot on the infrastructure and getting some of the plans approved, so if people have questions about the specifics, I'm glad Don's here, if you have questions to ask him. So next, we're looking to build out this infrastructure, where, and get some of that moving, figure out what are the priority features and projects that we want to move on, create a phased plan, because it will be a little challenging to do everything all at once. We'll need to apply for funding, build things, and then enjoy it. Next, I just have a couple more slides. So one of the key things that we've been working on lately is looking at a playground. We did some work a few years ago where we had a big public meeting, tried to figure out what people wanted, this I think was, I know it was pre-pandemic, but probably around 2018 or so, we had a meeting at the middle school. Had a lot of plans, had a student group from a grad school that came up with some ideas for it, so we've been working from that and trying to say what's the most important, and we really think just getting a play space, playground in there is one of the key first moves. So Kathy Gernhardt has been doing a lot of research, she's set up some meetings that our subcommittee has attended with some different groups. So we've been doing the research, really want to make sure that it's designed for different ages, different abilities, different development levels, and has interaction between people of different ages, and we're even thinking about, you know, we're thinking about children, but we're also thinking about the parents of the children, that they can get around with elderly, there, you know, there can be things that would be great for elderly to be using also, so we're thinking broader than we want something for two- to three-year-olds only, and we're working on that and hope to get some input also. So next one, next slide. Another one is having an event area, we showed you the open lawn, but we hope to have a space that we can have community events and picnics, and hoping also in our plans that we could have a pavilion and some kind of stage area where we can have performances, and just the kind of thing we don't always have, oh, let's do that, oh, we have the town hall, and, you know, traffic, and it's sometimes a little hard to do everything on the town hall lawn, our Kiwanis also doesn't have the big open space, so we're hoping that that will serve a community need also. Next. And then tomorrow, some of the other things that we're looking at, and we still need to work more on, that we want to be able to lay out the walking trails between and around the features, signage, Veterans Memorial, there's a historic area near the Bonny House, whether or not Historic Commission wants to work on something there. If space allows and it makes sense, a dog park is on the plan, acknowledge some of the Native American history in this area, possibly an orchid, orchard, and one thing that Whitman has and we don't always have is a place to take pictures. Everyone goes over to Whitman Park to take their prom pictures, why not Hanson? It's a, you know, a wedding or any, you know, a family reunion or something, so try to have a scenic spot for something like that, would be lovely to have it here in our town. And the last, I think I have just two, two more. This is the plan, it's hard to see the whole plan, but I just put on here some of the key things to, so you can get a sense. If you look on this plan, the bottom is High Street, though I've cut it so you don't actually see High Street, but you can see over where it says Community Garden on the bottom left, that's right near the food pantry. There's a lawn area where I showed you the pictures of the cornhole tournament, the playground over on the left, it slopes down into the woods, there's the event area and pavilion, walking paths, Veterans Memorial, possible dog park, and then there's some trails and parking and whatnot in there. And we can come back to this, like, in case people have questions, I think there's just one more slide to say next steps, there's a lot to do, continue looking at the research on the playground, gather input, talk to people in the town, figure out how this will be managed, because it's not something that our committee will say, all right, we're going to do this and know how to do it and move forward, so we need to work on that. We have to research and get financial support, grants, see about CPC funds, create a friends group, most places like this have, has a group that works with what's going on in the town. So those are some of the things that we're working on and will need to work on, it's much bigger than just those steps, but just trying to give you a sense of what, what we're, we need to be doing. So that's it, if people have questions, I could answer, or maybe Don.
Well, did Mr. Ellis kind of want to tell us what he's working on with infrastructure and how that's going, or?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, that guy.
The other Mr. Ellis, yeah.
I have this, if you, the thing you gave me, or you have that.
More in the line of like, is there something we can do to support you guys and, you know, and help you guys? Is there anything like the board or Lisa can do, you know, to help you guys, you know, move along, or just let us know?
If you can keep the money flowing, we'll be all set. Sorry, I don't get the joke on the planning board, so.
I imagine, I imagine it wouldn't go over very well, yeah.
Some of the things that we got going on now, as I wanted to ask the board, probably Lisa, I did get a call back, we have the old, I'll start at the beginning, we have the old hospital well that's on there, and I'm sure you're all aware of that, and Joe and I had an appointment with the individual, the first guy, he never showed up, and then after that, I must have called three or four people, and they just either can't do it or they don't know how to do it.
And that's for irrigation to use the-
Because it's actually a commercial size, it's not a residential size.
Right.
So there was one, I dropped a set of plans off to, it's called H2O, it's in Kingston, and I left this plan with them and the woman that was in charge, and I got a call back or an email back that they couldn't do it. Well, then about two or three weeks later, I got a call from that, from the guy saying, give him a call, I gave him a call, so we met with him up at, up there, and we pulled it, had the highway department pull the cover off, he went down and looked at it, and he says, yeah, you can do that. He said that the, all they have to do is bring up a pump and a generator, because there's no wiring in it.
Right, right.
It's live.
Yeah.
And, you know, flush it and check the depth to see if it's usable, so that's the next step coming along. He asked me a question, and I couldn't quite answer it, he said, does this have to come under, what's the pay scale for?
Oh, prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage.
Yeah.
Or not, and where does that break off, because I told him I didn't know when I'd get back to him.
Well, our procurement officer, Ms. Green, can answer that question.
Well, we're, we're, if he's only going to be performing a survey of it, then prevailing wage would not apply, but if they're actually going to be doing work, that, that includes lifting up a, you know, a screwdriver, a hammer, hair plier, or anything like that, the prevailing wage would-
Clutch, that was a, a-
Regardless of the dollar amount?
A dollar figure.
No, prevailing wage is, it applies basically anything that has to do with like $149.
I think you're thinking about the bid, the requirement for RFPs, Don?
Yes, yeah.
But the, you know, like, if it's over a certain dollar amount, you have to go, you have to get three bids, you know? I think that's what you're thinking about.
It shouldn't cost more than, I wouldn't think more than $1,000, but if you did one day, just pump it in, and they wouldn't have to take some parts out of it, get to the wellhead, but they're not installing anything, they're just doing the test to see whether it's usable or not, and-
Yeah, so if they're just testing it-
So they're going to get back to them with that, so we can give us a price, so we can bring it up to, you know, to the, to the board to be able to, to approve.
If they're, if they're just testing, if they're just performing testing-
That's it.
Then prevailing wage would not apply.
Oh, good, thanks, they'll be happy with that.
Well, yeah, definitely.
And, did you tell them about the septic system and stuff like that?
We have a time limit, so I didn't go into detail.
Well, we've got another five minutes or so.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
So just in general.
Why not wind up with the septic? That would be a great way to-
Well, there's a lot of people that have helped out, and the clearing of the trees, the highway department did that for the septic system that was down there, worked with us, they also have taken the, the top of the well pit off several times-
Yeah.
And re-installed it. And Gil Amato, because he was part of getting the Title V approved for the septic system that's there now.
Yeah.
So we've had a lot of people that have helped out going along, because this is a big project-
Oh, yeah.
-to do. We have, let's see, we had to redesign the park layout, I mean, not park, the food pantry layout for the direction of the cars to line up, we met with them, the person that was in charge there, and she told us what she wanted, we did a temporary plan and presented it to her, and then I said, tell, call me if you don't like it, you know, if you don't hear from you, I'll go and walk away on the plan, and that's what's on there now.
I didn't, I didn't-
I guess you can't quite see it.
So I know one of the concerns that they had was making sure that the folks that they're serving were still going to have their privacy preserved with whatever the arrangement was, because, you know, nobody wants the entire town to know that they're going to the food pantry, so.
Well, see, what they did, what they decided to do is to come in and angle park as they come in, and on both sides, and then when they, they open up their trunks, and they don't even get out of the vehicles, and they, the people from the food pantry come out and put the food in the back, and then they close the-
That's what they're doing now, it may not prospectively always be that way, that was a COVID protocol that they implemented, mostly, I mean, it was for the clients, but it was mostly because there's a lot of senior folks that volunteer up there, and we didn't want to expose them, so it may not always be that way, but I'm more interested in the septic. What, what is the septic for, and are you planning on tapping into the food pantry septic?
It's already installed to it, it's the, the food pantry is already in the septic system.
No, I know that, but whatever you guys are doing, are you?
We're not touching anything.
You're not touching their septic.
The only thing we're going to do is add at some point, and I think we got a grant, I'm not sure, I have to check with Tony, like, for the pantry to be updated and add bathrooms off to the side of the building. What we plan to do is to incorporate it on the side of the building where the food pantry is, it faces the roadway, the main roadway that goes in, and it doesn't face the side. I can get up there and point it if you want.
It's right, it's that 24-foot addition of the, right-hand side of the building.
Have you been to the food pantry at all, because I know they have some concerns about that.
It's actually the back, it's the other side of the building.
Right here, the food pantry parking seat's at an angle there, and that, and that's And that's what they wanted.
I think that the, I, may I suggest, because we only have a couple of minutes, but may I suggest that you guys meet with the food pantry board? Because I know there were some concerns about putting bathrooms next to the food pantry would make that building an attractive nuisance for people to. Right now, there's no reason for anybody to be in the food pantry building other than Plymouth County Beekeepers and the food pantry people. And they were concerned that if you put something on the outside of the building, now you've got all of the stuff that's in there from those two groups is just more at risk.
What we've done, this is the area where they come in, they come out, this walkway here on the building, come out and put the stuff in the vehicles and then they turn around and go out. This building, the bathrooms are on this side and entered this way, they're not entered from the side of the pantry food. And the only reason we're attaching it to it is in the winter when it has to be winterized. We can go into the building itself downstairs and shut it off and drain it back for the winter so it doesn't freeze. When you put a bathroom, say over here, but that's somebody else's property, but if you put it out here, it would be more difficult to interact.
But you're also not going to, you're not going to heat that space.
Yeah, that'll be heated.
Who's going to pay for that?
It's just minor heat. I mean.
There's not separate utilities right now.
There's not separate utilities.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, there's.
Well, the only thing we'll need actually is lights. I mean, we'll shut it down in the winter, so when winter comes, it'll just shut right down. The only thing that'll be in there is light.
I would, I mean, I think this is excellent progress. I would strongly advise, since the food pantry and the Plymouth County Beekeepers have both been there for a while and have been good stewards of the buildings, that you guys meet with them to hear whether they've got concerns.
And I say, I say we, I'm no longer the president, but we really have no, what we do is we pay a quarter of the utilities in the food pantry building as Plymouth County Beekeepers. So I don't.
The food pantry has to be, yeah. They have to be careful because they're a 501(c)(3) and they can't supplement anything. Their funds need to exclusively benefit the clients of the food pantry. So something's got to, whether it's, you guys do separate utilities and maybe this is, and honestly, they've been talking about separate utilities for years, so maybe this is the genesis to break out a separate, you know, meter for each of the users. But you can work with Ms. Green on that and talk to the food pantry.
Yeah, this is the last slide where we said there's so many things to do that we don't know exactly what they, so lots of details, but great idea to meet with them again.
Now, going, this is great, and I think it's great for people to know that, you know, it's going to be phases. It's not, you're ripping, you know, a Band-Aid off and all of a sudden it's all changing all at once. And I know you guys are meeting on a fairly frequent basis. Those meetings are public. Where are you meeting and what's your schedule? Like what?
We usually meet in here, in this room, and we've been trying to do it on Mondays, but there's so many Monday holidays that we've been rotating with some Mondays and Wednesdays. So I don't know if you remember.
I have them all written down, no, but we can put them out there. I think the biggest piece is that a lot of the people that are on the committees are, on this committee are on a whole bunch of committees.
Yes, yeah.
So we're running into a lot of scheduling conflicts just simply because just people are just, they care about the towns. They're volunteering for many, many towns.
Yep, yep.
What we're trying to do is do a better job of broadcasting it out just a lot further in advance. So we're booking meetings, you know, like four to six at a time.
That's awesome, yeah.
Try to get, get them out a little bit sooner. It's easier for our schedules, but also we want to try and get more involvement. We're finding that there's a larger uptick in people attending the open meetings, which is great. It is great.
Yeah.
But just going back to, you know, what we were talking about earlier, I know that we have a 635s, but I, going back to the support piece, I can't emphasize this enough, you know, the people on the committee, Phil, Dawn, Dawn number two, Mary Ann, Kathy, Robin, they've been working really, really hard on all of this for years and years and years. We've been getting a lot of people wondering, you know, what's happening up there, what's going on? So a lot of this stuff we're bringing to you are in the infantile stages. It's a little bit more than concept right now, but it's still so early on. But people are asking, you know, what is happening? This plan, for example, this has been around for a while, but we haven't been able to get finalized plans. It's taken this long just to get finalized plans and being able to partner with the engineers to be able to make that happen. Shout out to Tony and Eric and Lisa in particular for helping us because if it wasn't for Tony, you know, a lot of these grants, we wouldn't be able to get access to. So when we're talking about food pantry and bathrooms and things like that, the only reason why we can't even do that is because Tony was savvy enough to find a grant that would be able to fund just not only the beautification of that, but also to add to it. So it's, a lot of this stuff is continued upon those things. Being able to get extra funding so that the burden of creating something like this doesn't so, fall solely on CPC or taxation is us being able to get grants. So a lot of this stuff does involve having to have minimal parking spaces. The layout has to be very particular in very much the way it is, simply because you only can fit so much into a plot of land to try to get all the ideas on there. Just know that a lot of this stuff is going to be trying to be, it's going to be broken down into phases just because, to what they were saying earlier, it's just such a large project. Right now, we're kind of focused on the left side of this, if you're staring at it, the left side of that, that little circle area. We're going to be focusing on the playground, community area, maybe the building a little bit. Lisa did a really good job of finding some possible funding that we can use. We have to figure out as a committee how to kind of navigate this because again, the funding is finite. Expect to see lots of changes. All these conversations are great. Kathy, Robin, and Mary Ann have been doing a fantastic job of doing a lot of the playground research and bringing up great, great data. Dawn has been doing a fantastic job of trying to get some type of irrigation system figured out. We're very lucky in a sense that we have irrigation there possibly. And you've got to remember that if you want to keep all of these things looking nice, you do have to be able to water it. If you want to have an orchard there, if you want to have grass that stays green, we have to go through these preliminary processes. So just for, the reason why I'm belaboring this is because it might feel slow and it might feel like it's taking forever, but these things are really meticulous and we want to make sure we're doing it right. Because if we're going to be spending a lot of people's money and spending a lot of people's time, we want to make sure it's being done for the right reason. So bear with us as we, as we kind of, you know, chug along and figure this stuff out.
This is great, and it sounds like you're getting support from Highway, so it sounds like everybody that needs to be supporting you guys is supporting you and helping you, you know, reach your destination.
But continue to attend the meetings, and if anybody has any ideas, you know, let us know. And if anybody does have concerns like that, you know, feel free to reach out because we want to be able to have partnerships with other committees to make sure we're doing it right and we're taking everybody's ideas and concerns into consideration. But yeah, if you ever want to get updates on these things, we're going to try and come back a little bit more periodically to give updates as we go. But a lot of this stuff is really just just trying to figure it out.
So if you had to give us a ballpark of like, so what I'm kind of getting is that the playground is maybe your next.
Yeah.
Like, you know, that's, that's on the radar right now. Are you thinking by like, say, maybe like spring meeting, you might be talking about maybe CPC funding or?
I don't, I don't think we want to overpromise and underdeliver, so it really just comes back to Lisa's doing a great job of piecemealing and finding these different things and bringing it to us as we go. We can't honestly thank her enough for that and what Tony can find.
Yeah.
So it really just depends on, really, we're focusing on that playground area. That's the, that's the first and foremost. We want to do a ground clear and focus on that playground area. If we focus on that, we find the funding for that and everything kind of falls in. I think we're going to get a lot of usage out of that park.
Yeah.
We were going to put a couple of articles in for this town, this warrant, this town meeting. But I think we have the money to be able to do some of this stuff without having to go to town meeting, so it might happen sooner than later.
Okay.
So we just have to figure it out, but we'll give you updates as we go.
Does anybody else have any questions for the park? Yes.
I just wanted to add the two dates of the next few meetings.
Okay, great.
So we're going to be in a minute, so September 13th and September 27th at 6:00 p.m. here.
Okay. And again, open to the public? If you, people have like a, you know, they want to influence, you know, sort of like what ends up happening up here? This is a very democratic process and, and you're welcoming that input?
Yes, and we hope to have more, some public input.
Mrs. Copato?
Just a quick comment. I've lived here 37 years almost, and I've been attending the meetings, hopping on for about three years now. And I did let everyone know that I always go to the Whitman Park. It's actually closer to my house. But, and I love that park.
Yeah.
But I want to, you know, and I think a lot of other people in town, they want something bright in town, especially if you have young children. And I've learned a lot by going to the meetings. And a few times I've had a couple of suggestions and they've listened, and I think the town's really going to benefit from that.
That's awesome, yeah. And Sir, did you have anything you wanted to?
I just wanted to find out the dates and examine myself.
Okay. All right, great. All right, so, well, thanks. This is great because this is one of those questions we get asked at Shaw's supermarket all the time. What's happening with High Street? So now we can say, funny you should ask. Look it up on the, on the town website. Oh, which reminds me, will we be posting this?
Yeah, I think we have a, which we were, talked about that at the last meeting. We want to try and get the tab updated on our website to make sure all this stuff is in there and work with the IT team to update these things as we go.
Okay.
We just have to connect those dots. Because it's a new board, though, one of the things that could really help us out is to get an endorsement for the plan layout, the way it's presented up there. Every time we have a new board, it's always helpful to have the board kind of endorse the plan that's there.
So you're just saying conceptually?
Yeah, I mean.
Because of course, the big question is, how are we going to pay for it?
Yeah, I mean, well, the plans can always change as things happen, but if the board endorses the plan layout as it is, I think that would go a long way.
I would entertain that moment, motion to conceptually approve the High, High Street Park Committee's layout as presented here.
So moved.
All in favor, well, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay, great. Okay, you got another endorsement.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, great. Thanks, guys. Good to see you. We appreciate it. All right, and that brings us to interview finalists for administrative assistant position. Ms. McDowell, could you please bring Teresa Jordan as our first person? And you'll see her resume in your packet. Hopefully you guys had a chance to read the resumes.
Can I just pull your smartphone back a little bit?
I don't even have mine. Oh, hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. We are being recorded, just so you know. Not, I'm not trying to add to your anxiety at all. I just wanted to make sure that you knew.
Are we on TV?
Not, well, are we live streaming, Ryan? I don't really know. Okay. Yes, we are. So now you've added to everybody's anxiety. But, okay, so we have you here for our administrative assistant position. And maybe we could start off by just, you know, if you want to, whatever you want to tell us about yourself, you know, why you're interested in the position, what your background is, that type of thing, and then we'll just take it from there.
Sure. So I've been doing administrative work. Goodness, I go way back, probably because of my age, but I'd say at least 25, 30 years at least. And I want to work for the town. I applied years ago, didn't get the job, and I just, I love the town. I've been here for 20 years. We built a house here and I just, I respect the town and the decisions that you make regarding the town. So I've always been interested in working for the town. My skill set for administration, I'm pretty, I think, up to date with, with working computers, copy and scanning. And if there's anything I need to learn, I have no fear about learning it. I'm pretty adept at that.
That's great.
I'm a self-learner and I can take direction as well.
That's great. So, yeah, and you've got a great, a lot of really great work for a lot of great organizations. Do you think you might, how, how do you think you'll feel about working in the same town that you live in? Do you think that could be awkward or?
I don't think so now that my kids are grown and the whole neighborhood has changed. We're not as close knit as we once were. So I don't see that as a problem at all. You know, you could tell me y'all live here and I wouldn't know the difference.
Yeah, okay. Did anybody have any questions for, do you want to be referred to as Ms. Jordan or Mrs. Jordan?
Mrs. is fine.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Jordan?
Not at the moment.
So, I mean, one of the things, this office has many competing priorities on a daily basis, and you might start the day off thinking it's going to go in one direction and it takes a sharp left after you've had your morning coffee. So are you pretty good at kind of zigging and zagging as needed and, you know, kind of flexing and, you know, and, and doing that type of thing with your schedule?
I'm, oh, yes. My schedule is very flexible.
Yeah.
I am, as far as work goes.
Okay, yep.
If there's ever a question, I would take it to my superior and say, everybody wants, you know, so-and-so wants this and so-and-so wants this. You tell me which comes first and I dive in. Yeah, so I don't have a problem with changing in the, you know, changing shifts in the middle of working on a project if that's what's needed.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
How are you at being able to manage competing priorities? Because I'm thinking, it's along the same lines of what Laura was saying, but, you know, you're going to find yourself getting tasked with something and the next thing you know, your door is getting knocked on, you're getting 15 phone calls. How are you able with being able to just set limits, be able to, you know, complete those tasks while having to manage things that you just weren't anticipating having to deal with, which is guaranteed to happen? It's going to happen, yeah.
Well, I like to be busy, so, and I'm a multitaster. What I just came from at home. I was doing about 20 things at once. So, I mean, it doesn't frazzle me if that's what you're getting at. I, if there was ever a question, like I said, I would take it to my superior. If I had two people knocking at my door at the same time and saying, I need it now.
And you feel comfortable doing that on your own if you needed to?
Making that decision?
Yeah, because I'm thinking a lot of times, especially where you live in town, you're going to have a lot of people that you know, just naturally that you know, they're going to be popping in just saying, hey, I need you to do this for five minutes. And then if you have 15 people asking you something that takes five minutes before you know the day is over, you got nothing done.
Well, if there's priorities and I know what the priorities are, they will take precedence, but then, I mean, if someone's coming in to the town, being respectful. I know, Lynn, you had talked about a situation where somebody just kind of, you said, I'm going into a meeting and they pulled you, right? Pulled you anyway. And I'm kind of supposed to be that buffer if I were to get the position. And we can only do so much. I'm good at the kit gloves, kind of diplomatic, you know, rough women, smoothing down ruffled feathers, so to speak. So good, I think we'll be fine.
Okay. Do you have any catchphrases? Like, let's say you do have somebody with ruffled feathers, what would be some of the catchphrases you might use to?
If I was stumped, I would say, you know, if you wouldn't mind just holding on a second, let me check on that for you.
Lovely, yeah.
You know, I get where you're going with that, but, but let me just do a little research right now and see if I can find a solution for you.
Those are amazing answers. That's great.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Are you comfortable if, as we move forward with the, we are going to have a meeting,
Are you comfortable, if, as we move forward with the, we are going to have a meeting, um, I don't know if she told you this yet, or if it's going to work through 9:30 on Thursday about the new website?
Yes.
Okay. Can you do website, learn how to do website updating and stuff? That's kind of, a little bit of, okay.
I've done a little bit of it in the past for different places I've worked for. I worked for my church for many years.
Right.
It was the, the only one in the office, so.
Okay.
I worked on the website, but that was a while back, and like I said, I'm.
Things change. I know.
They do.
Yeah, I know.
But I'm a quick learner.
Okay.
What I've learned about the computer is there's probably three different ways to do the exact same thing. So not to get, ah, we can't do it. There's a way.
Yep. And do you have any conflicts that we need to know of? Any conflicts with, um, and, and when I say conflicts, not like, oh, is there anybody you're angry with up at Town Hall? Do, do you have anybody that works at Town Hall that you are related to, or that you know, or that you think would present a problem for you?
Um, I do have a daughter that works at Town Hall, but I don't think she'd present a problem for me.
And she, just to be clear, she's our part-time IT person that we just hired.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that was the leading question. I knew that, but I just, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. And so you feel comfortable, because there may be things that, um, there are going to be things that are confidential that you wouldn't be able to speak to your daughter about, that she wouldn't know, and she may say, gee, something weird is going on, I'm picking up, you know, that you're going to sort of be sworn to, to silence on. Is that something you're comfortable with?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
My daughter is very closed mouth.
Okay.
Maybe because I'm her mom.
Yeah.
But, um, she, she's very good at being confidential, and, and we don't chat a lot.
Yep. Okay. All right, and did I, Ed, did you have a question?
The only one I, is the, the number of hours a week. You're, you're good with the 15 or so hours?
Fine with that.
Okay.
I mean, I, we'd like to have more hours, and we, we may, we're going to try to have more hours for the position, but we want to make sure that anybody, if they should be, um, given the position, that they accept it at 15, because we just, we don't know what Town Meeting will do.
Yep. That's fine, and if it should roll into more hours, I can do that too.
Okay.
But I'm fine with 15.
Okay, great. Any questions? No? Okay. Ms. Green or Ms. McDowell, did you have any color commentary that you wanted to provide to us about?
No, the excellent candidate with excellent qualifications and skills, and we're happy to have her here as a finalist, and we'll see where we go with the end of the night.
Okay.
I do have one other thing. She did apply previously for the planning assistant, and she was one of our top candidates, and it just, Mr. DeFrayis went with somebody else. He felt he was a better.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay. So we have two other finalists, and I think our intention is to make a decision this evening based on the recommendation of Ms. McDowell and Ms. Green, and as long as we all agree. So I think with that, you'll hear from us either this evening or tomorrow, one way or the other.
Okay, and can I ask when the position starts?
Ms. Green?
So, um, in a perfect world, Lynn is going to be on vacation next week, so if you're able to start next week, that would help me, and I will not be in the office by myself.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm used to, I do drop interviews, seeing people with one year here, two years here.
I know.
It's weird seeing someone that's been this or there for nine years.
Somebody with staying power.
Six years.
Yes. The second candidate, Kimberly, she contacted me yesterday. She withdrew because she's taken another position.
Okay.
Who is this?
Kimberly Mayhew.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that makes that decision easy. When then?
I'm going to get Emily.
Okay, great. Hello. Sorry for the awkward, I know, it's very kind of intimidating. The only thing missing is like a light bulb coming down and facing right at you.
Yeah, I know. Exactly.
Well, welcome. So we're here to make a decision about, um, our Assistant Administrative Assistant, and if we could just start off by you just telling a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in the job, what your experience is, that would be great.
My name is Emily. I'm 42 years old. I've been doing office work for about 20 years now. I was doing accounts payable, accounts receivable, human resources, filling everything. I took a step back, uh, three years ago from my full-time job because I had a daughter that ended up having a disability, um, so she needed more care during the COVID lockdown, and my boss at that time wasn't giving me any flexibility with working remotely or anything like that.
Yeah.
So I had to step away from him and take care of her, but she's now on an IEP, so she's in school full-time, five days a week, and I'm itching to get back into the workforce because being a stay-at-home mom is not my thing. I really have, in the past three years, gotten a lot of, um, a lot more attention towards things going on in the government, and I've really wanted to take an opportunity to learn more about how the government works, um, especially in a small town. I grew up in this area, so I'm very familiar with the town of Hanson. I was originally in Halifax, but now I'm in Bridgewater. I grew up playing in the cemetery and playgrounds around here, so I just really want to get to know a little bit more about how it all works, you know, and be of assistance to whoever needs it.
Okay, great. Um, how, um, do you feel comfortable with the fact that we will have confidential information that can't be discussed beyond the four walls of your office?
100%. The company that I was just working with, or until, as of yesterday, she decided to sell the business, but it was called Simplified Lives. It was a moving concierge, um, company, so I had to help pack and unpack and rearrange and organize for a very high-end clientele, and I had to sign an NDA to not discuss even with my own partner at home.
Yeah.
Anything that I would find in their home, and I strictly abide it by that rule, and I understand why, and I know that mom's the word.
Okay, well, great answer. Did anybody have, have any questions that you want to ask your competing priority question?
Yeah, just the same question I asked the last candidate. Just how do you deal with, uh, competing priorities? You know, working in, in the town, you're going to have, um, just citizens coming up, and you have a whole to-do list for yourself?
Yeah.
Um, and with kind of an open-door policy that we have, you're going to get your, the door knocked on constantly.
Yeah.
How do you manage meeting the needs of the citizens with the competing priorities of just, you know, doing your day-to-day job?
I'm a mom, so I multitask mainly.
Yeah, that.
My, um, other boss, I was basically the one man show, so I was the one customer service, answering the door, answering the phones, multitasking, taking the bills, uh, sending out the bills, so it was a constant pull in different directions, but I, I prefer it that way rather than anything being slow. I have mental patience as a virtue, and I know that when people do come in and they are disgruntled, how to diffuse the situation. I've handled that multiple times in my, um, life at Herzog.
Can you give us a couple of buzz phrases that you would use if I'm, I'm like all worked up and, and in a dither?
I understand your frustration is one of my main things. I'm here to help, and if we can just go over, um, your availability, I'm sure we can try to get you into the administrator as soon as possible.
Okay, nice.
Is your resume accurate that, um, you worked at both?
Yeah, yeah.
How'd you manage that?
He owned both. He actually bought a marina as well.
Gotcha.
So then we had to take over marina, and I was learning how to do slips and all that stuff too, so. I managed it through QuickBooks, and I managed it through just not being afraid to just put on different hats. I mean, when the certificates of insurance would come up, I would have to deal with those, and the smoke alarm would go off at the apartment buildings, I'd have to call the fire department and the sprinkler fitter, like, it just was constant. Put on different hats, but I, I enjoyed it.
But you were able to balance those?
I was able to balance it, and I was able to still work on the hospital bed when I had my daughter, and she was med flighted into Boston day four, and I was still doing my emails and still getting all my contracts and everything in for her. And I continued to work for him for four months until January, Christmas, I think is when I left, and my daughter was in the NICU for two and a half months. I still managed to go to work every day and still go into Boston to see her during the lockdown for COVID.
That's amazing. But also sad that he couldn't be flexible with you. That, I'm sure he's regretted that decision every day since.
Yeah.
Family first.
I know.
And just keep in mind that, you know, work-life balance is something that we value.
Yeah.
So don't, don't sit there and put that burden on you if this works out that way.
Yeah, I try not to. I still care about, you know, I hope he's doing well and everything, but he doesn't have a close-knit family or anybody really in his world. He's just a lonely person.
Well, I'm sure if, everybody has found that you ought to cherish good employees if you have them, because they're very hard to come by these days. So I'm sure a lesson has been learned there. Did anybody have any other questions? Okay, we're making the decision tonight, um, so Ms. Green, Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell, would you have any color commentary that you wish to express to us about Ms. Sprague?
Um, I mean, I had the opportunity to talk with her one-on-one, and we had a very good conversation and talked a lot about what goes on in the office. It's a busy office, and, um, again, you're, you're juggling many things. You're in one direction, suddenly you're in another direction, um, and it was, it was good conversation.
Okay. And right now, the position is posted for 15 hours, but we may or may not be going to 19 hours, depending upon what Town Meeting allows us to do. Is that okay?
Yes.
Is that something you can handle?
Yep.
Okay. All right, great. Good to know. All right, well, thanks. We'll, we'll let you know either tonight or tomorrow, you know, and, um, and thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. So Ms. Green, Ms. McDowell, I'd love to hear from you, what your thoughts are, and if you have a recommendation for the board.
We're really torn because we like both of them. It's hard to decide which is the better fit.
It's going to be, it is a very difficult decision. They both come with a lot, with good experience, um, they come with, um, great skills, and, you know, we really look for the, the heavy hitter, basically. And I think one thing that, that does put Emily a little bit ahead is that she does have a lot of social media, uh, experience. She's very familiar with Instagram, Facebook.
Way to bury the lead. We didn't hear that. I didn't know that. Yeah. I mean, that's, I wish she had said that, you know? Yeah.
She, she, yeah, in, um, where we are going to be moving to the new website, um, that in, in, that will be one of the prime, um, skill, um, duties for that position. That was one of the reasons why I asked the first lady if she would be comfortable that, because I had, for some reason, I had no question in my mind that she, this one would be fine.
Yeah, I, I think they, I mean, they both really seem like very good quality people.
Yes.
I really loved, um, Ms. Sprague's, um, she just seems like a self-starter, like whatever she needs to learn, she's going to learn. And she will figure it out, she will look it up, and she doesn't need to be spoon-fed. And I'm not suggesting that Mrs. Jordan needs to be spoon-fed, but it really came across very strongly with Ms. Sprague that, um, she's going to figure it out. And I mean, the fact that she was managing apartment buildings and fishing boats and, you know, lawn, like, maintenance business all simultaneously is mind-boggling.
Two very different companies with very different, um, basically a lot of different skills and, and priorities and demands, and she was able to juggle all of that. And that's what this office is, it's a lot of juggling.
But it, but, you know, Mrs. Jordan also has had a lot of experience in, you know, Salvation Army and, um, you know, with, with her church, and then.
I like the fact that she's from Hanson, too.
I do, too. And, ah, the bills, you know, mainspring, I mean, that's going to be like a lot of juggling of different, you know, different things, um, so I.
And a lot of people contest.
Yeah. I got the feeling both of them would be able to handle, um, you know, um, difficult situations, which periodically we do run into. So are you guys making a recommendation for Ms. Sprague, or what, what's happening over there?
Sprague. I think we're both leaning towards Ms. Sprague.
Did anybody else have any thoughts?
No, it's your team, so whoever you want to go with is who I'm going to make a motion for.
I want Lynn to be comfortable as well.
Yeah, that's the main.
Yeah, that's the main thing. Well, you guys, I mean, you're going to be all in lockstep in very close confines and having to rely upon one another, so it needs to be somebody you're both feeling equally comfortable with. Okay. All right. So, um, I, I, did anybody have any other questions for Lynn and Lisa? All right, then I will entertain a motion to appoint Emily Sprague as the administrative assistant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right. That brings us to, um, October special Town Meeting preview and recommendations.
Congrats on filling the role. Good job. No, it's not easy.
So, did, did you have anything that you wanted to point out to us, Ms. Green? Before we do that, though, Ms. McDowell, I know that, uh, the chairman of our finance committee, um, had expressed a concern with being able to get the finance committee recommendations to us, I think you had maybe said by the first week in September or something. And then I had sent an email, a follow-up email, which I wasn't sure if you saw or not, saying, could we push our date we go to print to the 15th of September?
I believe he was fine with that. He did say.
He said he was fine, but I wanted to make sure you were okay with it.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. All right, so can we circle back with Mr. Sullivan and let him know that we're going to go to print on the 15th, um, in light of the fact he needed a little bit more time to?
I'm going to send him the updated warrant tomorrow, too.
Okay.
Let him know that.
Um, and also, I would be, um, selling you short shrift if I did not mention that he and Mike Dugan both pointed out that they thought, A, you had done excellent work, and B, you had really delivered this earlier than they had remembered it being delivered for quite a long time. So kudos to you. Okay. So with that, um, is there any, are there any changes that you'd like to point out to us, Ms. Green?
Yes. Um, and, and there, uh, there will be some further, just slight modifications on these.
All the changes are highlighted in orange, and all the, I kept all the comments that we made, and I put them underneath anything that happened since we've met last. They can follow through. Because there are also some articles that have been moved around, so I just said where they've been struck out at the end of the, where they are no longer valid, and they've been, where they've been moved to, it's noted that they've been moved from somewhere else.
Okay. So, um, shall we start at the beginning?
So Article 1 remains the same.
Okay.
No changes.
Um, well, I'm sorry, so I just want to, so I think, might I suggest, um, that we do have, um, the time to wait until we hear back from the finance committee on their recommendations, which we haven't already always been afforded that time. But in this case, I think we will have that time. Now, our next meeting is the 5th. You are going to print on the 15th. Are we scheduled to meet? Yeah, but if, oh, so we are scheduled to meet on the 12th? Okay, great. So I think probably it would be, based on Mr. Sullivan's timeline, likely the 12th that we would have their recommendations. And even if we don't have their full recommendations, we might have some idea of the majority of the articles, what their recommendations are, and we'll just have to vote on those that we don't. Okay. Do people agree with that? We'll wait until we get the finance committee recommendations?
Before we recommend? Before we make a decision to recommend?
Before we make a decision to recommend. Before we make a decision to recommend. It just seems more collegial, and it isn't necessarily that it's going to change our vote, but they may come back with questions or thoughts that we did not think about and might, you know, might influence how we vote. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Green, so Article 1, no changes?
No changes, Article 1.
Other than the ones that, well, there's a couple that are...
Oh, Article 1, no changes.
Oh, thanks. Sorry, I skipped ahead to two.
Article 2, there will be a modification regarding the administrative assistant to the select board and town administrator, which was moved to Section 11B, administrative and/or full-time. There'll be a change. It will be moving back to Section 11C, part-time position. So we'll be moving that back to that position.
Okay.
Does the moving of this in any way have to get voted on by the wage and personnel?
Yeah, do we need to do something in wage and personnel to codify that?
It was existing in the, it was my error. It was existing in the bylaw as part-time, and I misunderstood an email thinking it was moving to full-time, and it was just going from 15 to 15, which is still not full-time.
Okay.
So no vote or anything?
No vote, no changes to that article.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and then what we have is, let's see, under Section 11C, part-time positions, number L, which is the animal inspector, there's a change to update the salary range to show, to increase the salary range from 1,000 to 1,600 to 1,000 to 3,500, just to cover the increases. Because right now, we need to update this to cover the increases for the animal inspector. Also, number, letter U, which is the committee clerical and administrative support staff, same thing, we've got $15 to $15. We have corrected that and updated that from $15 to $25.
Now, is that the same as the administrative assistant to select board?
No, that's a different position.
Okay, so that line, but that line is gonna move over here. J.
J is going to...
11BJ is gonna move over here.
Right, right, but it won't be J when we move it over, it will be like probably double F where it was before.
Now, is this like a Shirley Schindler?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Who supports community preservation? She just does minutes.
Yes.
So the ones above it and below it are both 15 to 15. Is that how we normally do it? You're winding this by...
We don't have an assistant veterans agent right now. And what emergency...
Those positions, those positions, the ones that had stayed the same, they, prior to, like, the assistant veterans agent hasn't been filled, so we really haven't done very much on that salary. But we did want to update the committee clerical and administrative support because we do have a person in that position.
Did you want to do the emergency clerical labor just because we're in here changing and who the heck are we gonna hire for $15 an hour? And we'll hamstering ourselves if we don't change it?
Yes, we can update that.
What do you guys think about that?
I don't mind, but it's a wage and personnel meeting, isn't it?
That's true.
It's not a, this isn't a town meeting thing.
Well, can we bring it up?
No, naturally, yeah, just want to make sure we're doing it at the right venue, so...
Okay.
So we'll update that change, and we'll place it before, what one? This one here, the emergency clerical labor. We'll place it before the wage and personnel, and then we'll go to finance committee as well. And that would be it for section, Article 2. And of course, under the explanation, that first bullet point will be updated. That will be corrected. So we're going to take that out, that we're creating a new position for a full-time administrative assistant to select board, so we will be taking that language out.
Yeah, okay. And what does this note mean? Town accountant added two changes, I think it means in salary, which are highlighted in dark orange. Board of Health was notified as one needs to have its approval. Is that the animal inspector one?
That's the animal inspector, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Article 3, so we, during our last meeting, we had talked about transportation to one of the agricultural high school, Norfolk, for a, for a student, at, was gonna be at the cost of $63,000. We have additional students who are attending Bristol Agricultural High School that we worked with Whitman-Hanson Regional and worked with Whitman. And what we were able to do was secure transportation for the three students directly from their homes here in Hanson and Whitman to the school and then back to the homes, rather than having them be picked up by a bus in Pembroke, brought to Middleborough where they changed buses, and then, and then brought, transferred it down to Bristol Aggie, and then the same. This actually saves us money, because we're not gonna be utilizing for a student for the bus from Pembroke to Middleborough. So this actually is gonna save us money. So we do, we did add that in there. It's the cost of $39,000 for this two students in Hanson. Whitman will be covering the third student. We are drafting up the agreement for the transportation company that will break down the payment between Hanson and Whitman. But we did want to put that in for free cash to allocate that funds because we need to supplement the budget.
Okay, and simultaneously, are we looking at our contracts?
Yes.
It is befuddling to me how we are stuck paying a bill for busing when we're already paying them to educate our students, which presumably would include busing, because it does for the regional school district.
I did review the agreement, and it's actually silent on this, yeah, on this, on this, basically. But the law states that we are responsible for transportation for the students. So it's just a matter of, I am looking at, I am looking into DESI, and I have sent an email regarding the town's ability to file for reimbursement for the transportation that we are paying directly for. So I have started that process, and hopefully we'll get some answers on that. Article 4, our town council is here to talk about Article 4, which is Alden Way?
Yeah, yes. Thank you. So Alden Way, essentially, if you all recall, there was an article on the last town meeting. This article is to rectify an error that was made because all of the plans that laid out the roads weren't properly captured. So this, this article rectifies that and allows for the taking, which we originally contemplated in that first, first meeting, but we're now taking the correct property as opposed to the incorrect property. So easy enough. And, and there's also a layout hearing tonight, too, right?
No.
Oh, no, that, yes, we've changed that to September 5th.
Oh!
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was wondering why you weren't here. I was here for the layout here.
You were? I thought you were here for an executive session, that's why I didn't say anything. You don't need to be here for an executive session, I mean, yeah, okay.
I thought you were here to talk, to talk about the article, so we'll see you later.
Oh, okay. The point is you do.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, folks.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, so next article?
Article 5 is basically capital for Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. They did, I gather, from what I understand, they did meet with capital improvement committee and bring the information to private improvement. And then we did add the infield mixed dirt for our parks and fields that presented at our last meeting. So this is updated to show all of the capital that has been requested.
Okay.
Okay, Article 6, there's no change to that. That is the opioid settlement money that would, will be used to fund the Plymouth County Outreach Prevention Program. Article 7 is for the lease purchase of the body cams for our police officers. That has not changed, that's the same. Article 8 also, fire department fees, enforcement fees has changed, no changes to that. Article 9, the amount of $73,560, that's still the same, that is to cover overtime costs, necessary to maintain adequate staffing at our fire department, that's the same. Article 10 also is the same, $395,000 for the purchase of an ambulance. Article 11, again, $20,000, that's remaining the same, that's for payment of the ambulance billing.
Oh, shoot, I wish we hadn't let Kate go. Is there any way we can get her back? We need her back for this community preservation article.
Ooh.
Because we need to talk to her.
Article, oh, this is hard. Oh, okay, then we have an Article 12, $536 for free cash, and this is a funding source to Article 6 of the October 2013 special town meeting, which is going to replenish the funds for the emergency management system. That would also provide funding for shelters for our residents if we were going to a long cold snap or a long heat snap. This will provide funding for heat, either heating or cooling shelters.
It says, town council reviewed and has no further questions.
What does that mean? Town council reviewed and has no further questions?
Which one is it?
That's okay.
We're not even...
That's fine, we'll move on. Thank you, though.
Is that per Number 12 or...?
No, that was Number 14.
She's talking about 14, we're on 13 now.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Number 13, article is, again, is the same, $55,222 for free cash, and this is gonna install the generator adapters at Hanson Fire stations in the water department. So if any of those generators fail, I gather, these adapters will help alleviate interim And then Article number 14 is the community preservation, that's $55,000 total, from community preservation, community for housing reserve for exterior appears to the Hanson Group Housing located at 53 West Washington Street.
Okay, and Kate...
That has not changed.
Kate reviewed it, and she said she had no further questions.
Right, but she said it wasn't permissible under community preservation in a prior email. So I don't know what that means, that she has no further questions. She literally said, because the property had not been purchased with community preservation money, it could, they could not use community preservation money to fix it up.
All right, we will, we will reach out to Kate on this in the morning. Okay, Article 15 is the first of our two proposed bylaw amendments to the Personnel Classification and Compensation bylaw. Article 15 amends Section 12D-G, which would allow the employees to carry over up to 10 days of unused vacation leave with the approval of wage and personnel and the select board.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fedoroff. We had a quick question, and then we would, you know, then you can be on your way, but it was about the community preservation article.
Yes.
You had expressed some concerns about a private home that was not purchased with community preservation money receiving funds from community preservation to fix it up.
Yes, and I received word from, I believe, Mr. Kemet, about maintenance versus, what was the word? It was rehabilitation versus maintenance, I believe. And the CPA makes a distinction between the two, where one is acceptable and one isn't, and this is actually acceptable.
Okay, so you're okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Whether town meeting will be okay with it is a different situation.
That's a different story. That's up to town meeting, yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
See, I served a wonderful purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
So 15, again, is the bylaw amendment, the proposed bylaw amendment for Section 12, 12D-G, which will allow employees to carry over up to 10 days of unused vacation with the approval of...
No, we're upset.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yep, thank you.
For now.
With the approval of wage and personnel and the select board. Any, any vacation time that's approved, the employee must use prior to the end of their annual anniversary date.
Right.
And what we did was, we made a, just a quick language change that you'll see, to carry over not more than five days, because basically, our vacation is basically five days and not a week, where a week could be misinterpreted or ambiguous to seven days. So we've kind of narrowed that down. Town council has reviewed the article, and this is the final, this is the final article for this proposed bylaw amendment.
I'm a little confused. I'm seeing, I'm sure you just explained it, and I just didn't get it. I'm seeing that the first paragraph is saying up to 10 days, and then G, it's saying up to five, no more than five days.
Yeah, well, with the full bylaw, the initial bylaw, it said, you know, this is basically, it'll say, employees will be allowed to carry over not more than five days of vacation time with the approval of both the wage and personnel board and the select board. Employees may be allowed to carry over a total of not more than 10 days of unused vacation time. So they have to go before the board, both boards, and get approval to carry over up to 10 days. But we're still keeping the same language of the five days, but then expanding that language to mean with the approval of both boards, an employee would be, you know, would be able to carry up to 10 days.
That just gives us some additional flexibility?
I was just reading it, I was reading, I read, read the period as a comma.
Yeah, gotcha.
You can do five days with the approval of the select board.
Punctuation matters, Ed.
Ten days.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
Thank you for your explanation.
If something were to happen and employee is not able to use all their vacation due to staffing or another reason that they provide, this gives the board some flexibility. Next, Article 16 is the second proposed amendment to our bylaw. This is gonna be Section DA7, which basically allows the granting of newly hired employees up to 15 days of vacation leave, but then also allows for granting of additional vacation for employee retention. So you will see the new language down below. And again, this gives the select board and/or town administrator flexibility for, for granting additional vacation days for the purposes of employee retention.
And can we just, and out of an abundance of caution, just double-check the references that we've got to make sure they're the right sections?
These are the absolute right sections.
Okay, all right, because I thought I heard you say 12DA7.
Yes. So Article 16 is specific to Section 12DA7.
Right, but there's nothing A in here, that's what's making me say that. We don't have A in what we're reading.
Oh, see, that's what I thought, okay. So we will, we'll update that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll update that. So that's, I think that's why, so if you can update it to show the sections. So these sections, they're specific, so the section, Article 16 will be updated to show the specific section. Specific sections.
All right, awesome.
All right, Article 17 is the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, some have decided it's up there.
Can I ask you a really, a quick question before we move on? I'm sorry, just for the sake of asking. So it says, Article 16 is where I'm back at, sorry. "To grant a newly hired employee up to 15 days of vacation leave, and for the purposes of employee retention, up to five days of additional vacation time." The way it exists, what stops everybody from just saying, "I want five more days"?
This is with...
Because everybody, it becomes, like, what's the, what's the...
Well, the select board and the town, we have to approve it.
No, I know, but like, but there are like equity issues here. It's like, well, you gave this person, now I'm telling you because I know this person got it.
I'm gonna leave if I don't get that extra five days.
I just want to make sure that, like, that, I'm sure you know the answer, I just wanted to ask it aloud, I'm sorry.
So this would be on a case-by-case basis, you know, on...
But that's my point, like, what makes, what would make Lynn more, what would make Lynn get it, but, but not somebody else, like, whoever, just insert the person, I'm sorry to use your name, but not somebody else, I just wanted, what makes person A eligible and not person B? The way this is written, it, it leaves a lot of room for, yeah, it gives us flexibility, but it's about equity, not, when it comes to employment, it's about equity, not flexibility. Does it make sense what I'm saying?
This is for retention of employees, so there may be somebody who comes to us and says, "I want another week," or "I'm leaving," and we may decide that we're not going to exercise that additional week with them if, you know, if somebody, you know, were to put it that way.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to throw a monkey, I just, I just want, I just want to say it because it's just, the way it reads to me is just...
Do you suggest the wording change?
I don't even have an answer for it, I'm just...
No, I mean, Kate did review it, so I know what you're saying, like, you know...
There's nothing wrong with it. I'm just looking at it from a, legally, it's just, will some people get, like, well, you're asking for five, but I'll give you three. Okay, so what separates a three from a five?
You're opening a lot of doors.
I think that this was, I thought the main reason for this was for newly hired employees.
This was actually the primary driver for this, was the fact that we would like to offer Mr. DeFrayus an additional week's vacation, so...
So can't we just, is there a way to...
Which is, which is...
I don't have a solution, I just have criticism openly, it's just, I, I'm curious if, because I agree that we need to do this, I'm just curious about the wording.
We are opening ourselves up to everybody saying this. I'm just, it's absolutely true, we are trying to keep Tony, so this is what we're doing.
Can we make the offering of vacation days continued upon, like, the discretion of the board, rather than making it a, because the way it reads...
Isn't that what we're doing?
No.
No?
No, not...
Not the way I see it. This, this creates, the way I'm reading it, it's going to create tension that doesn't need to exist.
Right.
Because the minute someone, because since you said his name, it goes, all right, well, we did this, we created an entire bylaw specifically for Tony.
Right, which was just not what we're supposed to be doing.
Which is gonna be a slap in the face.
No, no, I mean, Tony was the driver, but we recognize that we, there may be other people that we say, look, this is a competitive market, and we're going to have to give somebody an additional week as a sweetener to retain them, because we don't want to give them more money, or we can't give them as much money as they want.
No, I understand the motivation behind it. It's not the motivation I have the issue with, it's just, it's how the wording is gonna be interpreted, because it's gonna, because if we say, we did it for Tony, and we value him, well then, rightfully so, as an employee, I'd say, well, why am I not as good as Tony to you if I'd say, if I don't get this, I'm gonna quit?
Well, I think, keep in mind who this applies to, right? So it doesn't apply to the union personnel, they've got their union contracts. It doesn't apply to any of our contract employees, Mix, O'Brien, Shav, right? So it's a very limited group of people that it would apply to. It's basically department, it's basically department heads or non-union personnel who don't have a contract, and that's who it applies to.
Is there anything, could we have Kate just look at this quickly with Joe's concerns and see if she can...
Well, no, she did already look at it, but I don't...
Excuse me.
Maybe Lisa, you could convey what the board is feeling and see if alternate language could be offered.
If there's some alternate language, yes.
Yeah.
Just to be, just to be safe, that's all. I agree with all of it, I think it's fine.
That's fine, no. If you guys are reading it that way, then other people might read it that way, and you very well may be right, so it's not going to hurt to have Kate take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
All right, so Article 17 is basically the Clean Water Trust, and I believe this is for loans for residents of Hanson to upgrade their septic systems if they don't have the funds otherwise.
And we had several articles that were Board of Health articles, and the premise of us placing them last week was that the Board of Health would be meeting today, and we would hear the results of that vote, and if they voted to support them, then we would keep them in the warrant. And have we heard back?
I have not heard, no.
So I have heard they approved the increase for the animal inspector. They approved the amended Article 22 of 55,000. And they appointed Arlen Diaz as the transfer station committee member.
Okay, it may be that they had already voted on the betterment. I think...
They may have.
Gil might have said to us that they had already approved this, but can we just circle back and double-check on that? And I think it, a little bit of clarification, although the article itself says, you know, "septic," my suggestion would be that we insert "septic" in the explanation for another round of "septic" betterments. Because betterments can really be anything, we just want to make sure that everybody's super clear.
All right, Article 18, no changes on Article 18, that is, actually, I'm sorry, there is a change. So when we had looked at this prior, our county accountant, Eric Kincher, recommended that we put an expense limit in here, so you'll now see the amount of $10,000.
Okay.
So that, this has been updated with that amount. Okay, Number 19 is, remains the same, there's no changes on that. That is to place on the Assessors Map 67 lots 15 and 15A into the care of custody of conservation, so that remains the same. Article 20 is placing Assessors Map 88 lots 7 and 8 into the care and custody of conservation, so that is the same. And the explanation below will give you more information of the actual location of these properties.
Yeah, but again, I think it's important, not that there's really a lot of money, there's no money associated with it, but just as an FYI, Article 20 was put in because the water department had to sink a new well. In order to do that, they ended up taking property that otherwise had been put into conservation, and the law requires you to give an in-kind donation of similar property to offset for the fact that they've taken property out of conservation.
That was the holder, that's the holder property.
This is still, yeah, okay, yeah.
It's great walking, isn't it? Okay, Article 21 remains the same, that is to replenish the Conservation Fund for $30,000. Article 22 remains the same, no changes on that, so we have $55,000 to appropriate for, basically, from the October 3 of 2020 special town meeting, Article 11, which was for compact replacement at the transfer stations. There was an article for $55,000 that was approved. So what they're doing here is they're re-appropriating the money to cover salaries at the transfer station and expenses at the transfer station in the amount of $55,000.
So this is a line item move and then also, but then reallocating it to something different?
Correct.
Okay. But, so, in short, we're not really spending any more money as a result of this article because it's cross-neutral.
Right, exactly. Because that money was already allocated in a prior town meeting. Okay, so Article 23, there's been a, there's been a language change on that one, so we are voting to transfer from the Camp Kiwani retained earnings, the amount of $50,000, to be added to the May Annual Town Meeting 2023 Article 12 salaries, which will be, which covers, which will be covered in the Camp Kiwani FY 2024 operating budget. And what this does is, this covers salaries for the Cranberry Cove, for swimming, swimming lessons and kayak rentals.
How can we add to the May Annual Town Meeting 2023 Article 12 salaries when May Town Meeting's already happened?
Because what they, unfortunately, what they did was they did not put funds in there to cover the Cranberry Cove.
No, I understand why, but it's, Town Meeting has already adjourned for May Town Meeting, we can't, you can't add an article, you can't add something after the meeting has been adjourned and the decision's been made. I, maybe I'm missing something, it's just reading really strangely to me. Am I, is it just me?
Yeah.
No, the warrant's closed, you can't add something to a warrant that's closed.
That's what I'm trying to say, like, the meeting...
I mean logically you can, I don't think some loophole or something.
Okay, we will double-check on that language.
Okay.
Okay, we might, we might need to, what we...
I mean, I know it says that the town clerk and the town accountant updated it, but I've literally never seen us retroactively go back to a town meeting article and update it.
Wouldn't we have to open the warrant back up to add the article?
They have it actually saying that it was for Cove salaries, and there are, there's no line item, so it's going to the salary line item instead.
No, that's not, I'm not arguing like that. I'm arguing the May Annual Town Meeting 2023 Article 12 salaries. How do we add it? How can the town vote to transfer?
So would it be the May Annual Town Meeting Article 20, Article 12 salary line?
You still have to...
Or the amounts reflected in, you know, so that the amounts reflected in the May Annual Town Meeting are changed accordingly? I don't know, but the wording is just really strange.
Yeah, we'll double-check this with Eric and Kate on the language on that.
Okay.
Article 24 is for, there's no change in, well, actually, there, it may be a change on that one. This article was originally presented for an amount of $10,000 from free cash to replace the brick portions out in front of the library in the senior center, which have become uneven, so they are a trip hazard there. So possibly what they are looking to do is increase the 20, the $10,000 to $20,000 so that they can also repair concrete from behind the building that's been damaged by snowplows, and also they wanted to put some decorative borders to keep the aesthetics of the building, and Ms. Caffado is here to speak on this.
Okay, in the right center entrance of our library, that becomes a sheet of ice in the late at night, and over the past few years, they've used all kinds of things to prevent people from crisscrossing, which does make the building very unattractive. But we've had in the center, when you're going in the doors of the library or the senior center, that's been basically atrocious, it's really dangerous, and it's really a liability for the town. And the walkway itself has bricks on either side, you kind of want to eliminate maybe just a row of bricks, just so it's just not plain old concrete. And then, you know, the back areas, Karen is going to give the information, and she had a, it's been Charlie Baker and Jude, like, the custodian over there, who have had someone come, and the estimate is $17,000. And I do believe they were going to talk to two more people, and they may have already done that, but that's why they're asking for the increase, hoping it won't get to that one, but we've been putting this off and putting this off, and my biggest concern has always been, you know, a senior set, it could be anyone, but you have a lot of seniors going in every day, someone sliding in, who knows what happens.
Yeah, people with various disabilities, you know, yeah. Okay, did anybody have any questions about that?
This, the thing in orange or red is not going to be included in that, right?
No.
Yeah.
Because you're going from 10 to 20, and it's to increase the area you want to, you want to address.
No, we're not fixing the place larger, we need to, in the center, where there's a big, a big square of bricks, that has to be taken care of.
Yeah.
We've had people come to drain it.
We didn't have any problem with that, but the new language, I have to be honest with you, it struck me a little, eh, could be, could be the hour, it said decorative borders, and I was like...
Yeah, you're adding, you're adding $10,000 to add, if I was to read this, you're adding $10,000 to add a decorative border.
That's the way I read it.
And I know that's not true.
It's, it's not, there's already bricks there, okay? But that needs to be replaced, like, the concrete has to be done, and, but, we just don't want concrete.
Right, so you originally asked for $10,000 to do a brick portion of the walkway.
Yeah, that was the second one you're walking in.
And that's just, and now you're, it's saying here, you want to make it go up another $10,000 so you can put bricks around it. That's not what you're asking for, you're asking for another area as well as the front.
Yeah, we have to update, basically, you have to update the whole area, that long...
I agree, I read it the same way Ed did.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
That long way gets, I mean, really icy.
No, we're not disputing that, we're just disputing the language here. The explanation needs to be tweaked.
It's not in the explanation, that's in the notes to us.
No, but the explanation needs to be tweaked if it's more than one area, because it doesn't really say that, it just sort of says...
Well, I have to say, it says $10,000 above, it says $20,000 down here, so that hasn't been changed.
No, that's true.
Yeah.
So what is the change? Just changing the black part of it, you're changing the $10,000 to 20, and the rest of the wording stays exactly the same?
Yes.
Yeah, just stays the same. I'll make a mo, do we have the money?
We're waiting for our free cash certification.
All right, I mean, I'll make a motion to increase it to $20,000.
I mean, if that's what they're saying, all in favor? Okay, great, so let's get rid of that explanation.
Yeah, get rid of that.
Thanks for being here.
Don't let anybody see that explanation.
That's helpful. I know we would have had questions if you weren't here, so appreciate it.
Yeah, it really looked like, oh, they want to add, like, I was like, what are we getting, like, mission design, you know, like a brickwork or something? It read very strangely. Okay, Article 25, you moved to put into the capital improvement matrix.
So that makes Article 26, 25.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. All right, so Article 26, this is for a, for new cabinets in the Select Board Office and the Town Administrator Office. Basically, right now, we're using the metal cabinets, which we're not able to secure, and do not provide us with enough room for the files that we have. So these cabinets here are rotary cabinets, they're taller, and they allow, they increase the amount of space, storage space that we have in the office for all of our files. So all of our legal files, all of our personnel files, right now, we're not allowed, we're not able to secure them.
Is that why there's blue tape up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So what, these cabinets here will include shelving, and basically allow us, it's going to increase our ability to store paper files.
Yeah, keep it secure, keep it safe.
Exactly, exactly, and we, where we have all the licenses and things like that, so...
You had us up, we needed more cabinets, don't worry.
We're removing some existing cabinets?
Well, basically, right now, there's just the metal cabinets that are there, they're all removable anyway. So those are all coming out.
These are replacing those.
These are replacing those.
And are they floor and ceiling, or are they, is that why we get more space?
Almost, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to get more space.
And these are rotary cabinets, so you'll have, you have storage space in the front, and then you rotate, they rotate them, and there's more space in the back. So it's a, it's a double.
I have to figure it out.
Pass the candy down there.
Yeah, no, you know...
Somebody's getting angry.
Whitman Town Hall has these.
Because they're taller, you get...
There is more space, and they're larkable, which is...
Yes, Whitman has these cabinets in their Select Board Office, and they allow for lots of storage space.
All right, we're all set. We think we're sufficiently convinced that you need these cabinets, okay? We're all set.
And actually, there's only one company in the area that provides these type of cabinets, so I have reached out for quotes and other quotes, and...
We're fine unless Miss McNeil had any more questions.
Does this one become Article 25? Do we re, re...
Yeah.
We're going to outnumber these.
It's all renumbered, okay.
Yep.
Because you, there's a bunch of them.
Miss McDowell will, will attend to those details.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, 27.
27 remains the same, there's no change, it's $76,000 for the stormwater management and the MS4 permit proposed by the highway, that is the same. 27, do we know where the funding is going to come from?
Free cash.
Free cash? Okay. You know, if these questions have been answered, it would be nice that they were, like, struck through too, because I didn't think, you know what I mean?
That's true.
You know, we, we're still waiting for the free cash certification, so we don't want to strike quite yet.
No, but, no, yeah, I get that, but to Mrs. Ray's point, there wasn't a funding source on the last, the last time, and it was updated, so there's no need to still have that remark there.
Okay. Article 28 is, has not changed, that's the $10,500 for the 48-inch, 22-horsepower commercial SCAG zero-turn mower for our highway department, and the pricing is through the state of pricing list. And just a little bit of trivia, SCAG power equipment now sponsors a Top Fuel 20 car and a Top Fuel Dragster, the NHRA driver's sincerity. They go about 300 miles an hour.
You never know when that's going to come up at a cost, that part.
All right. Article 29 is the same, that is $110,000 to provide the funding for the roadway surface crack sealing on Route 58 from Halifax Town Line to the Whitman Town Line. And basically what this does is this helps preserve our roadways from cracks that are there, this will seal them so that they don't continue to grow into potholes and things like that.
Jameson feels pretty passionate about this one.
Yes, yes, that is one thing that he is passionate about, is watching out for our roads, and we will update the funding source for the free cash as well. Number 30 is the Town Public Ways, the Witchville Lane and Proudfield Way, so this is kind of a redo of the town meeting back, I believe it was in 2006, where these two streets were accepted, but then unfortunately Hanson did not, within the 120 days, complete the title work that is required. So we're kind of circling back around with this, and we're starting the process again for this, still the same. And so Article, well, I guess it'll be Article 29, but Article 30, if this were to pass, Article 31 is a citizen's petition that came in, which basically asks for Article 30.
No, no, it doesn't, actually. It, it's way more watered down, it says to see if the town will vote to have a warrant for the finalization. So we couldn't, it's not even a warrant, it's not even an actual change, it's like a, will you put a warrant, which of course we wouldn't be able to do until the May Town Meeting, so it's way less than what we're doing already, yeah.
So it was a citizen's petition, but if Article 30 passes, then we will not need Article 31, of which the citizen that proposed the petition will stand up and ask for it to be passed over.
I thought they said that that citizen was off at college.
It could be any one of these people.
I think anybody in town.
No, it has to be him.
I thought we said last time, because I thought that too, but then last time we said, "No, it could be any one of the 110 petitioners that can pull it."
I believe so.
Because I thought it had to be him too.
Can we double, well, no, just to be clear, I think what we said was, to pull it from the warrant, it had to be the original petitioner. To pull it from the floor, anybody can move to pass that over, right?
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, anybody, I could stand up on any citizen's petition and say, "I moved to pass over." Yeah, I could stand up on any citizen's petition and say, I moved to pass over, once it gets to town meeting, but you have to include it in the warrant.
Can I just make a little point of information here? It's Article twenty-nine and Article thirty. You've got to change those numbers.
She said that.
Yeah, we will be updating the, we will be updating the numbers. I just wanted to keep it at thirty as it's showing on the warrant.
No, so you're right.
Just for myself though, no, and that's fine, that's reasonable anyways, because we're going to ask them to do it anyways. Just for my own point of order, to see if the town will vote to have a warrant, what does that even, what does that mean?
It's a citizen's petition.
Yeah, that was the language of the citizen's petition.
No, no, it's fine, but just to be clear, just again for myself, what they should have asked for is to have an article in a warrant, right? Just that's, you know.
Yeah.
So even if this was that, even if this was the pass in any way, it doesn't, it literally won't do anything.
Exactly.
Because this is petitioning to create one, like a town meeting essentially.
Exactly.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
They definitely meant a.
No, I know what they meant, I just, I want to make sure I just had everything in the wrong.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something, yeah.
Oh, Ms. Kepard, thank you.
Did you say that the article is to take it from the college education?
No, no, no.
No, I wouldn't put that in years ago.
Don't start rabble rosin' over there, Ms. Kepard. No, absolutely not, no.
Because I got three articles in about ten years if that goes through.
It's the Litchfield Lane, it's a Proudfoot, it was a whole, town meeting had already voted to accept those as public ways, but then we dropped the ball and after we voted to do that, because you have to take care of it within a hundred and twenty days, so the citizens maybe didn't have confidence that we were going to put this on the town meeting warrant, so they submitted a citizen's petition, which is inartfully worded because it's a citizen's petition and they're not experts at how to, you know, word a town meeting warrant article, so anyway. All right, Article thirty-two.
So Article thirty-two, Article thirty-three.
Which was, well, they're not passed over, they were included in that, yeah.
Yes, thirty-four, thirty-five.
Wow, we're really, okay, that brings us to the end.
Thirty-seven, these are all included in the matrix in Article five.
And are we anticipating, we haven't officially closed the warrant, but we're not anticipating anybody else submitting additional articles?
Not at this.
Okay, so we could, we could motion to close the warrant this evening and make our recommendations at the twelve, at the meeting on the twelfth.
Would we have to open it up again?
No. The recommendations, we don't have to have the warrant open.
You know?
I don't think so.
Because you're adding two.
No, that's a separate, well, it depends on how you do it. Remember in the past, we've done the.
I think it's easier, we just keep it.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I'm fine.
Yeah, and I.
I'm fine because you've got some changes to make anyway, so I don't think we want to.
Yes, yes.
All right. So, did anybody have any other questions or comments about the special town meeting? All right, so Lynn, just, I think we continuously need to post this until really town meeting, basically, because you just never know what's going to happen. Okay, that brings us to committee updates. Did anybody have anything? I loved the High Street, that was awesome.
Good.
And gave you the economic development, any updates on highway committee?
No, we haven't yet.
Okay. McQuan Property Reuse Committee, I'm absolutely stymied, you might be surprised to hear this, but nobody's applied to be on the committee.
Really?
Well, besides you, but I don't mean to, I don't mean to, no, no, let me pause some. Yeah, wait, wait, can I do a redo on that? Let's back up the video on that. No, no, to be on, besides constituents, who I would have expect, like, you know, the library, senior, you know, like, I haven't had a citizen at large, I should say, without, who's not a stakeholder apply. So that kind of got me to thinking, maybe we just do, not, we have not, you know, we have the committee be like somebody from planning, library, conservation, like some, you know, from each of the different disciplines, and then we'll, when we get a little bit of meat on the bone and we've got some ideas of what direction, we can always have public meetings where we invite people to come and brainstorm rather than hold up meetings. So that's what my thought process was, but I kind of wanted to pass it by you guys.
So you want a committee, but just a committee of stakeholders and not have.
Yeah, so initially it will be a stakeholder meeting, we'll get a little critical mass, a little bit of, you know, formal, some kind of ideas.
Yep.
To present and then respond, have people respond, the public respond to them, either by, you know, like a public forum, which I've done in community preservation, we did for High Street, it works pretty well.
We've done it for a lot of.
Yeah, yes, that was excellent, that one that you guys did, yeah.
You're not, you're against kind of having the committee as it is today, having, I'm not sure how many members there are.
I'm not against it, it's just in reality, nobody's applying.
It could be an open seat, I'm just saying.
Nobody's applying, it's like.
But if there was like two open citizens at large, that if somebody was to say next week.
No, that's a great idea. We could do it that way, we can still keep those positions open, but have the stakeholders meet, and then if somebody like feels particularly passionate along the way, they can join the group, yeah.
That's what I don't want to stop, I don't want to preclude that.
No, that's a good idea, Ed.
Do we have a date when the building is coming down?
Ms. Green, I did see an update on our little town of Hanson Facebook page, did you have an update on that? I'm sure it's going to be in your town administrator report, but.
Yes, I'll talk about it now. No, so the McQuan building, the asbestos abatement is almost complete, possibly maybe a week, week and a half. Once that's complete, they are going to start fencing the property off and the demolition will start. They're going to be doing it in phases, so they're not going to implode the entire building at once, so mid-September, we should start seeing that building coming down.
Let's just make sure we're keeping those lines of communication open with the library and the senior center, just, you know, around when work starts and making sure that, you know, that we get feedback, if anybody's finding that there's any impact whatsoever on the services we're providing, you know, we definitely want to hear, so let us, you know, keep the lines of communication going both ways. Recreation Committee, again.
We have one member already.
Yeah, just one member.
I feel like, just like with the capital improvement committee, when we had large vacancies, I think just talking about it openly in these meetings and telling people what they actually are about resulted in an overwhelming amount of support.
It did.
People that wanted to join that. I think when we kind of created the McQuan Committee and the Recreation Committee, we kind of did it in a way to test it out, to have the committee be formed, thinking that a lot of people are going to apply for it, and then they would help us develop what those missions were.
Yeah.
I think we've tried that and it hasn't worked, so I think what a better use of our time might be is to consider creating a mission and then compelling people to join that mission.
I'm fine with that. I think it's a great idea because it's hard for people to know if they want to join if they're not super clear on what they're joining, so.
Yeah, I think we should try that first maybe.
Yeah. Ms. Green, do you think that's something you could take a crack at in your spare time?
Mm-hmm.
I would just say for the Recreation Committee in particular, for the High Street, to get access to some grants, they want an overseer, a committee of, not a friends group, but like an actual committee that would oversee that, and we were kind of kicking around the idea that the Rec Committee might have some type of preliminary responsibility and role in being the oversight of the grounds and the maintenance and things like that, and it would fulfill the obligation of some of the grants that we might have to have without having too many committees at, you know, up front.
Yep.
So just to add that.
Well, then we got to get a Recreation Committee for him.
Well, that's why I'm thinking if we reverse engineers and say this would be part of it, maybe people would want to join that to be part of High Street oversight, so.
Yeah, all right, I dig it.
And one thing too that comes to mind is that we would need to be careful, because we have a Parks and Fields Committee, so we don't want to make, we want to make sure there's not confusion with Parks and Fields, but they don't oversee the High Street Park, so.
That's very, yeah.
We want to make sure we really identify our, what our Parks and Fields Committee handle and then who will work with the High Street Park, so.
It's all quite confusing, and we do need clarity. Okay, we heard today that Ms. Arlene Diaz will be your, even though unofficially you knew she was going to be your person on the Transfer Station Task Force, Ms. McDowell told us they took a vote officially today.
Oh, great.
So she's going to be your person.
Congratulations.
And I assume you haven't met, because you didn't have.
We're not meeting until after Labor Day.
Okay.
So should we vote, since they gave us the green light from the Board of Health, should we take a vote to appoint her from?
Is it our task force?
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted, yeah, so I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of Arlene Diaz on the Transfer Station Task Force as the Health Board Representative?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, any other committee updates?
Ms. Green? Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, a regional agreement committee is going to reconvene meeting September twenty-fifth. The agreement that the committee, an initial agreement, draft agreement that the committee put together is still with MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools for their review, but the committee is going to reconvene meeting September twenty-fifth, and as you may remember, Jim Hickey was the select board representative on the committee, and with his departure, that leaves a vacancy on the committee, so maybe at our next meeting, if members would like to think who would like to join me as Representative for Hanson on that committee, I'll be happy to provide you with copies of the regional agreements and we meet at five-thirty.
Okay, I'm sure we're going to have to have an arm wrestling match over that. So, okay, great, town administrators report.
Okay, so, well, the McQuan, we updated already, so we don't need to talk about that, but it is a little bit exciting to finally see that we're progressing with the work for that building after it has sat for so long and it's going to be coming down, so we'll be able to move forward with talking about future plans, future opportunities for that lot. I think it's really going to be an exciting time for Hanson now that this is, this hurdle is finally overcome, so look forward to seeing what that property brings. School began this week, or begins this week. A lot of my time the last week and a half has been spent around coordinating transportation for our vocational students at Norfolk Agricultural High School and Bristol Agricultural High School. There was a lot of phone calls, emails, talking with parents who were eagerly awaiting the bus transportation, working with Whitman, because Whitman has a student, Hanson now has two, so a lot of time went into that, but I'm happy to report that the Bristol Agricultural, like I said, we were able to obtain and secure transportation for our students, which saves them a great deal of time, both before and after school, by having transportation directly. And I know at least one of the parents is very happy with.
I think one of the parents said you saved her child three hours of their life every day.
Yes.
Not insignificant.
So in the long run, it will end up saving us a little bit of money on bus transportation, so that was, that was a woo-hoo to get that settled in. Elevator procurement, I did put a bid out through our state contract, through Convi's, through the vendors for elevator services, as we discovered earlier, when our elevator in town hall broke down, we don't have a contract with anybody for maintenance and repairs. And surprisingly enough, I did not get any bids through the state contract, so I'm going to be modifying the dates on the bid and I'm going to be sending it back out again across the board, so we'll move forward with that. And our personnel policies, we hopefully will have an initial draft of that by mid-September. They are almost complete with the draft of all the policies and hopefully we'll get that to us. I will forward them to the board for review and then we will begin the process with department heads and employees reviewing those, so that project is still in motion.
Ms. Green, excuse me, so what is the process going to be for us reviewing those? Are we going to, not that I really want to do this, but are we painfully going to go through each provision, which I believe we ought to do because this is fairly important, and we'll have to set aside, you know, a portion of time. People hopefully can preview, review, do their homework so that it could be reviewed more expeditiously, but I don't think this is the type of thing that we ought to just say, everybody okay with it? Yep, I'm okay with it, because it really has some potential wide sweeping impact, so we want to be very mindful of what we're adopting.
Oh, yeah, no, you know, this is, this is just the very first step of somebody looking at our policies, personnel policies, which some of them are really old, drafting updated policies, putting this all together in a draft and then forwarding it to the town. Of course, the select board will have a chance to review it, it will be going to town council for review.
I think we ought to look at it after town council has reviewed it.
Okay, we can do it that way.
I don't think we want to be looking at a version that may not be compliant with any of the relevant employment laws.
So what we'll do then is it will go to town council first, they will review it and then we'll come back to us.
Do you guys want to look at it before town council does? That's making.
I don't necessarily want town council to pay town council to look at it, like, look at our changes, like, that's my only concern.
Well, I'm totally open to it. If you guys want to look at it first and then send what we think is our best and final, you know, items to town council, I'm totally fine with that. I personally would prefer that I know that what I'm looking at has been reviewed by town council and is legal.
But if we make changes or suggestions afterwards.
We're going to have to go back to town council.
We're going to have to go back to town council, that's my only, that's my only.
I don't think there's a right way or a wrong way.
I think either way, we're going to have to, we'll end up bouncing it back by town council, we're going to have changes.
Yeah, it's going to get oomphed because there might be some policies that we think about that maybe they didn't think about, so we're like, hey, what about this, and then just going to have to go back to town council anyways.
It also occurred to me, we ought to make sure that our, that we take into consideration union contracts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all of that will be, it'll all be coordinated, that's why, you know, there'll be a phase review process that will include department heads and then the employees and things like that, so it's going to be a review. So this is, again, this is just, you know, the initial step, it's still a process that has to take place, but.
All right, well, we can figure out the details as we get closer. All right, that's awesome, thanks.
Also, to general code, our bylaw codifications, we've received a preliminary draft for review, which is electronic, so we may want to, we may want to resurrect our bylaw review committee.
We will want to resurrect the bylaw review committee, but we also will want to print that out. There is nobody in their right mind who's going to want to read that electronically.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Should we get a copy?
It'll take me a little bit to get it printed out, but we'll work on that. Okay, that'd be great.
Send it to Jane on printing, have them do it.
Well, I'll see how it works, I haven't opened it yet, so. But anyway, just, you know, to give an update, this has been a long process again, but it's moving forward. So all these projects that are kind of been fluttering up there, they've had move, forward movement. And also another, the wage and classification study that's being done by the College, Collin Center, which was a part of the Community Compact Grant, they have finished up the interviews with the department heads, they're now working on the ratings, and so the ratings are based on the amount of supervision, the amount of judgment and things like that, so they're working on that and, you know, there will be next steps to follow, so this process is still ongoing. Grants, so I did apply for a Community Compact Grant because we did finish up one project. I reached out to Frank Malisi, who is the Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee, and I just ran by him that I would like to apply for a Community Compact Grant to have a consultant help us draft up an official community, Capital Improvement Plan, which would include assessments of our assets, inventory, and then come up with a plan, funding options, things like that. a plan, funding options, things like that, so I applied for $25,000 for this project, and hopefully we'll get it.
Was he bullish about that?
No, he, he seemed very happy with it.
Yeah, so he was positive about it, okay.
Absolutely. Um, you know, one thing too about grants, and I just want to talk real quick about, is that, you know, when people say, hey, you know, you should just be applying for grants, there's, there's many different type of grants that require, um, a lot of different criteria, um, they require a lot, sometimes a lot of technical information that has to be filled out. So the Town of Hanson right now has two grant writers, myself, which I, I look for grants that are regarding process and policies, things like that, but we have Tony DeFrayis, our town planner, who is very good with the technical infrastructure type of grants, you know, the 39-page applications. So the two of us working together with grants are, are able to secure grants for, for different types of projects that the town needs to be done, so there's two grant writers. One person cannot possibly apply for all the grants out there, but two people can do a pretty good job at applying for these different type of grants.